Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The September 6, 2022 Legislative Session of the Anorundel County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mr. Volkey this evening.
Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Father God, thank you on behalf of all the people who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boldness and from your bold and gracious nature. In the Scriptures, you've taught us to obey the governing authorities, since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray this assembled council and for the agenda that's set before us tonight, please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our county. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413. Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was one submission through the online testimony tool that went to the entire council. It's included in the summary that is posted online and will be added to the record.
Thank you. We did not have anyone signed up ahead of time to speak, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may come up to the table at this time and have a seat. When it is your turn, we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. All right, seeing no movement in the audience, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I will be withdrawing Bill 7422 and introducing Bill 8422 this evening, which was not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Second. Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 18 and August 4, 2022.
July 18, 2022, the meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Chair Radveen. The invocation was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, both led by Ms. Pickard. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers, Orundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland. August 4, 2022, the meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 4:30 PM. Ms. Radveen explained that the purpose of the special meeting is to determine that a petition initiating a charter amendment meets the requirements established by law. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 18 and August 4, 2022?
So moved. Councilman Pruski.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of July 18 and August 4, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7822, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations Grants Special Revenue Fund, CIO Contingency Fund, Capital Budget and Program, Woodland Beach, Valin- Val F S Reloc.
Thank you.
Bill, sorry, Madam Chair, I have a few more to go. Bill Number 7922, An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Nuisance Properties Enforcement. Bill Number 8022, An Ordinance Concerning Recreation and Parks, Civil Offenses in County Parks Enforcement. Bill Number 8122, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Car Wash Facilities. Bill Number 8222, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Modifications Notice. Bill Number 8322, An Ordinance Concerning Scenic and Historic Roads, Designation of Roads, Furnace Avenue and Ridge Road. And Bill Number 8422, An Ordinance Concerning General Provisions, Flags on County Property.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3322, Resolution Recognizing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Anorundel County. Resolution Number 3422, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of a Resident of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anorundel County. Resolution Number 3522, Resolution Reappointing Members to the Anorundel County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Resolution Number 3622, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board. Resolution Number 3722, Resolution Approving Anorundel County's 2022 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. Resolution Number 3822, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of an Application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for an Annual Transportation Plan Grant and Other Funds Under the Federal Transit Act for Federal Fiscal Year 2023. And finally, Resolution Number 3922, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs for a Grant under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, Federal FY 2022 Local Solicitation, and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 33-22 first this evening?
So moved. Councilman Pruski.
Second. Allison Pickard.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Resolution Number 3322 first this evening has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 33-22.
Resolution Number 3322, Resolution Recognizing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Anorundel County.
Thank you. This is a resolution sponsored by the entire council, and I will just start off by saying I know that it does make an unbelievably difficult time for both a young person and their family, and so we like to just take a moment to acknowledge those that have suffered through and survived and those that have suffered through and not survived childhood cancer. And if any of my colleagues would also like to make a comment. Ms. Feidler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that the entire council came forward with this resolution. Some may ask why would the council recognize this month, and I think the key word is awareness. Any family who has had a child who has fought childhood cancer knows that it wrecks a family in many ways, and if you know someone in your community, in our community, who has a child who is fighting childhood cancer, just know that that family needs support in so many ways and reach out, because it's often the hardest thing to do is reach out. And I'm actually wearing a shirt here this evening. Noah Brave, a high school friend of mine, lost her son to brain cancer at the age of 13, two years ago, and she's been fighting to make awareness an issue, so I think this is an incredible thing our council's doing.
All right, seeing no other, oh, I'm sorry, the administration, if you'd like to make a response?
Pete Barron for the County Executive. Appreciate the council bringing this forward. Strongly support this resolution.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council at this time? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 33-22.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3322 has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 71-22.
Bill Number 7122, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Critical Area Overlay Growth Allocation.
Thank you. This is an administration bill, so we have Mr. Barron, and he will introduce the team representing the administration. You may have the floor.
Thank you. Moved to my regular spot. I have Ms. Krenitz from OPZ and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. Just wanted to make sure my notes were right. So 7120, as you recall, was discussed at the work session. Current code language based on guidance from State Comar requires that an area with an intensely developed area or IDA overlay to be located in an area of at least 20 adjacent acres. As a result, there are a number of existing commercial uses, marinas, et cetera, that were designated as limited development areas, or LDAs, even though from a development and coverage standpoint, they meet the standards of an IDA-designated property. As these properties attempt to improve or redevelop, many are prevented from doing so due to the coverage limitations of the LDA designation. This bill is a complicated technical bill, but it's pretty simple what it does. It will allow these properties to pursue a change in designation from LDA to IDA through the growth allocation process minus the 20-acre adjacency standard. I have the experts at the table. If you have questions, we do have two amendments that will be bringing forth at the appropriate time, and I do want to note that the Critical Area Commission has seen this bill.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? All right, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 71-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, there was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time and have a seat. When it is your turn, you may state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 71-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 71-22.
Bill Number 7122, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Critical Area Overlay Growth Allocation.
Thank you, and we have two amendments this evening. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment provides that requests for growth allocations are limited to non-residential uses or non-residential zoning districts.
All right, thank you. And this is an administration amendment. You may have the floor, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So under the original proposed language, growth allocation requests would be limited to commercially-zoned property. The administration's intent with Bill 7122 is to also include commercial, in addition to commercially-zoned properties, industrial and maritime uses in the district, so this change would broaden the applicability to any non-residential zoning district. We ask that you adopt this amendment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Councilman Pruski.
Second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this technical amendment corrects a numbering error.
All right, Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
I think Madam Administrator said it perfectly. Corrects a numbering error. Please pass.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Councilman Pruski.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Thank you. Because we have an amended bill, Bill Number 71-22 as amended will be heard on Monday, September 19, 2022. All right, moving on to Bill Number 72-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 72-22.
Bill Number 7222, An Ordinance Concerning Bay Ridge Shore Erosion Control District.
And this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, again, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Budget Officer, Chris Trumbauer, and our Deputy County Attorney, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. So this bill was also discussed at the work session, but to remind the council, 7222 modifies the Bay Ridge Shore Erosion Control District to include a project to replace, construct, repair, and maintain bulkhead improvements on the shoreline of the community-owned property at 80 East Lake Drive in Annapolis. We do have some folks here from there, so I'm going to try and talk fast, because I know they have places to be. Specifically, the community is seeking to protect the community clubhouse, clubhouse grounds, and parking lot by containing the erosion threat to the shoreline, abutting those grounds and improvements. The modification has been approved by petition of at least 75% of the owners of the property in the existing district. Actually believe they hit 82%, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? All right, at this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 72-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
Thank you. At this time, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 72-22. And I'm sorry, we will now open the public hearing. When your name is called, please come up to the table, have a seat, and state your name and address for the record. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes, and we have William Davidson and Lilly Openshaw. Mr. Davidson, you have the floor first.
Thank you so much. May I ask the Honorable Mrs. Robin if we could go out of order and let my associate go first?
That would be fine. Ms. Openshaw, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm President of the Bay Ridge Civic Association, and I have testimony to read in, in support of this bill. Bay Ridge is a subdivision of 464 residential properties located on peninsula that juts out into the Chesapeake Bay, just south of Annapolis. For all of its 100 years of existence, since 1922, this subdivision has struggled to maintain its shoreline against the natural forces of energetic wind-driven waves. In 1933, state law established that each subdivision abutting the Chesapeake Bay be regarded as a special taxing district for the purpose of shore erosion control. To date, Bay Ridge has established, under that law, two distinct erosion district project areas along its shoreline. One along the River Drive, which is exposed to wave action at the mouth of the Severn River, and the other along the shoreline of Bay Drive, which is exposed to the open waters of the Chesapeake Bay. These existing shore-controlled projects have enabled the community to improve, construct, and maintain proper shoreline protection measures for those major portions of our peninsula, and we think we have provided a model of long-term planning and community self-management in doing so. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of our Shore Erosion Control District Committee, Bill Davidson. Thank you.
You may proceed, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you for introducing the bill.
Of course.
I am Bill Davidson. I'm the Chairman of our Erosion Control Committee. Bay Ridge, we are speaking in support of this bill, of course. We now wish to add a project to our Erosion Control District, and that is the repair and maintenance of an existing but aging community-built bulkhead located at 80 East Lake Drive. This bulkhead literally holds up the community-owned land located on the west side of our peninsula, and that land is the site of our community clubhouse and recreation facilities. This historical bulkhead, about 250 feet, was built by community members decades ago and is now in need of repair. A short section is actually falling down as we speak, but all of it needs to be repaired in the coming years. In today's dollars, the maintenance of this community-owned bulkhead is beyond the fiscal financial capacity of our 100% voluntary dues-based homeowners' association, so we wish to use the more equitable means of the Erosion District to literally tax ourselves in order to pay for needed maintenance. All Bay Ridge residents enjoy this property, and only Bay Ridge residents will pay. As demonstrated with our previous Erosion Control District projects, using the Erosion District's self-taxing mechanism, we can effect proper, immediate measures as well as effective long-term maintenance.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else hear that little high-pitched? Is that, does anyone know what the source of that is? I was trying very hard to focus on your testimony, Mr. Davidson. Oh, no.
It sounds like some kind of celebration or something happening.
All right, I think we will just proceed, do our best to keep our attention on the business at hand. Oh, yes.
On October 8, if possible, you could vote tonight? I don't know how the process works.
This is up for a vote tonight, so you are in luck. All right. If there's anyone, oh, thank you, both of you are dismissed. If there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, you may come up at this time and have a seat at the table. When it is your turn to talk, you may state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 72-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 72-22.
Bill Number 7222, An Ordinance Concerning Bay Ridge Shore Erosion Control District.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 73-20. Oh, oh, wait a second. What happened? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 72-22.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 72-22 has been passed.
Thank you, and there's your vote. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 73-22.
Bill Number 7322, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning Cluster Development.
Thank you. Ms. Feidler, this is your bill. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feather, District 5. So we discussed this bill extensively at the last work session prior to recess. Really, it's just an expansion of the definition and then additional language in the lot design criteria. I will have an amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Administration, Mr. Barron, if you would like to respond, you may do so at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the experts at the table with me, Ms. Miller and Ms. Kenny. As we noted in the work session when we discussed this legislation, the administration supports, we have no concerns. Appreciate everybody working together on this important issue.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 73-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any testimonies through the online tool ahead of time.
Thank you. We also did not have anyone signed up to speak ahead of time this evening, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time. State your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Whenever you are ready. Wait for the little red light. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy Leahy, and I'm the Vice President for Public Affairs of the Greater Severnham Park Council, which is an umbrella group of about 60 homeowners' associations in Severnham Park. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight in support of Bill 7322 regarding cluster zoning, which has been a great concern to the Severnham Park area for many years. This proposed legislation has many noteworthy effects. First, it updates the definition of cluster development to delineate aspects of the definition more clearly than the current definition. The new definition details the expectation that lot-size variation is expected to be concentrated and that open space includes recreation. Second, and equally important, the definition is deleted from Article 18 zoning and is placed in Article 17 subdivision and development, where it properly aligns with the code provisions addressing matters applicable to topics covered in Article 17, dealing with questions about final plans for subdivisions. It ought to be apparent that by incorporating the definition into the code article already addressing cluster development, that it, that the purposes of clear statutory construction and transparency are better served than by the existing text. Third, and finally, the additional language added to Section 173502B, which already addresses cluster development, makes clear the county's intent to incorporate best practices in maximizing and providing landscape screening and buffer areas for the environmental benefits and additional benefits like noise reduction and improved infiltration near localized higher-density development. This bill does not, this bill doesn't come close to addressing all of the concerns that GSPC has, but more properly aligns the law with the intent of the law. So we ask for your favorable response. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to testify on Bill Number 73-22, this is your final opportunity. All right, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 73-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 73-22.
Bill Number 7322, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning Cluster Development.
There is one amendment this evening. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment reorders current code language to more clearly state provisions pertaining to lots and cluster development and building envelopes.
Thank you, and Ms. Feidler, this is your amendment. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feather, District 5. I think the summary really captures what the amendment is. In 173502, at the very beginning, building envelope is referenced, but then again, it is referenced at the end of the current section. It's duplicative, a little confusing, so I've taken the ending of Section 173502 and moved it to the top, replacing what is in existence in the very beginning of the section. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Hare, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 73-22 as amended will be heard on Monday, September 19, 2022. Thank you. All right, Bill Number 74-22 has been withdrawn, and I know we did have a, oh, it looks like maybe they've departed. I was going to just say thank you for coming this evening and being willing to speak out, but Bill Number 74-22 has been withdrawn, so we will move on to Bill Number 75-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-22.
Bill Number 7522, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations Amusements, Licensing of Coin-Operated Amusement Devices.
This is an emergency ordinance. Ms. Feidler, this is your bill. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Feather, District 5. We did discuss this bill as well at the last work session. It's to clean up an unintended consequence of a previous bill that required, unintentionally, an additional step for vendors of coin-operated machines. And I, the bill is emergency ordinance, because it is my understanding, and the department can confirm this, that we have paused accepting applications until this loophole is addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, you may have the floor to respond on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have Ms. Velez from IMP and Mr. Ritter, and I will let them confirm, because they are the experts. I do not know the answer to that question. As we stated at the work session, we have no opposition to this bill. It's a cleanup bill. Hopefully, the council will pass it, and I'll turn it over to our good folks at IMP or LAW on the license question.
We have no issues with this. It does clean up. It does allow the Class I licensees to also hold a Class E. So there is no issue. I think it was just kind of missed transaction.
Thank you. Anything from Office of Law? No, I'm seeing shaking heads. All right. Any questions from the council at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pruski.
Yes, just for the Office of Law again. I know last time when we talked with the initial bill, is there any concerns with the state bingo and amusement tax? Was this reviewed by them or anything that would cause any harm or issue? I don't think so, but I want to ask for the record.
I don't, kind of, read for the Office of Law. This has not gone to the state, as far as I know. This essentially just reincorporates what was the law before, where a Class I licensee was able to obtain a Class E license. Before, it required a Class E licensee to have a Class I license first. Now, you could have one or both.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 75-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public? No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time for this particular bill. Thank you. We did not have anyone signed up to speak on this bill either, but if there is anyone who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 75-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-22. Bill Number 75-22: An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations: Amusements Licensing of Coin-Operated Amusement Devices. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 75-22. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 75-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 76-22. Bill Number 76-22: An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations: Massage Therapy Establishments. We have another administration bill. Mr. Barron, you may have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be bringing 76-22 before you. Mr. Ritter and Ms. Velez are sticking with me from LAW and IMP respectively. We have Sergeant Felon from our police department. 76-22 creates a licensing framework for massage therapy establishments to operate within the county. Under state law, individual massage therapists are generally required to hold a license issued by the state. The state may take action against an individual if that individual acts without an individual license, but the scope of the state's oversight is limited to the provider, not the business. What 76-22 does is it creates a separate licensing requirement for businesses in the county operating as massage therapy establishments. This would give our police department a tool to go after businesses that hire unlicensed massage therapists and operate with little or no regulatory oversight. In certain cases, these unlicensed establishments may also engage in prostitution and human trafficking. 76-22 would provide police another tool to address these crimes. Under current law, when the county police receive complaints at one of these establishments, often the only recourse is to arrest the individual engaging in prostitution, who may, in fact, be a victim of human trafficking themselves, and the business itself is left alone to continue to operate. What we hope this bill will do is allow our police to hold the business operator accountable through their license. And then we have our experts here from LAW, IMP, and our police department, if you have any questions, but we ask that you pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. I see Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor. Not too long ago, we passed the public nuisance bill for some of the hotels on the 198 corridor, but I also know in North County, for some of my colleagues, there's been issues with human trafficking even around the airport. So any tool that we can utilize to prevent that, and it's still occurring, especially with the I-95 corridor, I appreciate you bringing this forward. So thank you.
Any additional, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. From the police department's standpoint, how many instances are you seeing where you have operators who you would like to cite because you think that if you shut them down, you can stop some of this activity versus where you're sort of handicapped because you can only arrest the person engaged in the act? I'm trying to understand, is this going to actually do what you all think it will do, and where do you see this happening in the county?
So to answer your question... They have deniability, because when we go to interview them, they will say, "Well, I told them they can't do that," or "They're not supposed to be doing that." And again, the females involved are often, could be victims of trafficking, labor trafficking, sex trafficking, again, are very transient, and they, for all intents and purposes, are the victims. So arresting them doesn't solve the problem. The owner or manager of the establishment would just bring in more people. So they have deniability. They can say, "Well, we didn't know this was going on, and there's no recourse for us on the business itself." And the answer, where? Anywhere. They can pop up in the county.
Yeah, quick follow-up. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is this a bill that the police department thinks is going to help?
Yes.
Okay. That's just what I want to make sure I understand, is that you all are looking for this. This is authority you need that helps you.
We're very thankful for inspections and permits in the Office of Law. We all worked together when my unit came to them, trying to, like, think outside the box on how to make Antarundale County unfriendly, so to speak, for these illicit businesses, and kind of put the word out that it's not going to be tolerated.
Got it.
Thank you. I just have a sort of a follow-up question. What are, what are the, you know, requirements that the businesses will be required to meet?
So if you go to page 2 of the bill, the definition of a massage therapy establishment, which runs from line 36 till line 54, and then there's some description on page 3 about what's required in the application. Is that what you're getting at, or do you want me to list out, because I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ritter? He might have a little bit better of a...
I was hoping you could, like, summarize the major points.
Current read with the Office of Law. So basically, what this bill would require is simply a license for the establishment, and what that entails is essentially just submitting the application with the necessary biographical information for owners, managers, licensed massage therapists, who are the only ones who, at these establishments, would be authorized to be giving massages anyway. So it's a five-year license, and it's a $25 license fee with the application. It would just have to be renewed every five years, and the owner or operator would have to update the information as new massage therapists are brought on. We've, essentially, it's just asking for copies of the state licenses for the individual massage therapists who are going to be working there. The goal was that it would be a pretty low bar for the requirements for the massage therapists who are actually properly engaging in the business, and for the individuals who are operating without the proper state licenses, it would be almost insurmountable because they simply don't have the paperwork that'd be required.
If I may, just to add on to that...
Go ahead.
When we were working on this bill, we did share it with the Massage Therapists Association to get their feedback, and as Mr. Ritter stated, the goal was not to create some onerous regulatory burden. It's so that they, if they don't, if they can get this license, they'll get it, and if there is a problem in the future, they won't be able to operate if we are revoking their license for bad behavior.
Thank you. And I think I heard you say, Mr. Ritter, one of the requirements is that the business owner has to ensure that each massage therapist is a licensed massage therapist.
Yes. The owner, in submitting the names and information of the individuals working there, would have to submit the copies of the state licenses for the individual massage therapist.
Thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm reading this, I think it's, overall, a very good exercise of our legislative authority to, you know, come up with a creative solution using our police power, right? But I'm wondering whether anybody knows, why isn't this sort of already in state code? Why are we doing, I guess, I'm trying to understand the nexus between why are we doing this as a county instead of, don't they already, you have the massage therapists have to have a license, and that's required by state law, and, you know, we, so we're sort of, I just don't understand where those two legal schemes or landscapes kind of overlap.
In our communications with the state board, they informed us that they tried to pass something similar in the state, and it did not get far enough and did not become law. So they were supportive of our goals here, as they had tried to do it on the state level before and just were unsuccessful.
Do you know when that was? What session?
I, I believe they said 2018, but I'm going off of memory here, and I don't have that in my notes, so I can't, so don't take that as gospel for 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually going to follow the line of Ms. Lacy's questioning. I don't know the session, but I went to a human trafficking seminar that they had. It was Prince George's County in Antarundale. This was four or five years ago, and part of the problem was the deniability, but when folks go to court, you know, if somebody is arrested, you obviously have to have, were you a legal business? Did you have the massage? And of course, they have deniability, and of course, that's a legal argument. Not saying it's the right thing to do, but I think what the police are asking here, and I don't want to speak for them, but you have a clear case about who is doing what, who manages the business, and that's what the bill provides the definition, which the state is kind of unclear. You have a license, but what does that mean? Who's operating? So again, I think it kind of closed the loophole and provides clarity to who's operating the business, and then if somebody is held, you know, for some criminal offense or whatever it might be, I think it just holds up better in the court of law.
Madam Chair?
Okay. Go ahead. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you. Just briefly following up on that. I'm actually not sure there's a loophole. I think you're talking about, what we're talking about is focused on exercising our legal authority over the premises and the owners of the premises. So it's a property kind of attachment. It's not about, you may find people who are committing crimes in that establishment, but you are also shutting down the premises where illegal activity is occurring, and that's the specific county tie, in my understanding. So with that, I support the bill fully.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Lacy's questioning before. Do you know what the holdup was in the state? Because it does seem like this would be, from what I'm hearing from the police department, that this would be something that would be beneficial to be a requirement statewide. So I'm just, if there was opposition or a holdup, do you know what it was?
Unfortunately, I do not know what it was.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
It looks like HB 309 in the 2018 session was a local bill for Antarundale County that allowed us to take this regulatory step. Is that what you all understand too?
I did not research into the state bill. We had already gotten into the county bill when that was brought to our attention.
It looks like that's what actually gave us the authority at the state level to do this regulation, because I think there were other counties. Charles and Washington had the ability to do it. Howard County had certain authority, and we went in and asked for it. It looks like it passed the General Assembly unanimously to give the locality the ability to do this. I don't know about the statewide. I can't find that bill yet, the statewide bill.
Let's see. Seeing no further lights right now, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 75-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public? We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair. We also did not have anyone signed up ahead of time to speak, but if there is anyone here who wishes to, you may come up to the table, have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. You will have two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 75-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-22. Bill Number 76-22: An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations: Massage Therapy Establishments. Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for your, for your light to go on. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 76-22. My apologies for the number mix-up. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 76-22 has been passed. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 77-22. Bill Number 77-22: An Ordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies: Youth Advisory Council. Thank you. Mr. Barron, once again, this is an administration bill. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excited to bring 77-22 before you. There was some concern in the office that we would be running late tonight, and we'd be past everybody's bedtime, but here we are. So I will let our youth chair, who's here to testify, cover most of the ground, but to give you the background, oh, and I'm joined by Lori Blair Klausmeyer. 77-22 establishes in code a youth advisory council. This creates the council, establishes requirements for membership and eligibility, and defines the council's duty. You all may recall that the county executive established the youth advisory council in August of 2020 to give young people in the county the opportunity to provide feedback and recommendations regarding county policies that affect them. As just sort of a footnote, that was the first incorporated youth board in the county since the Owens administration. So we were excited to bring them back. It's been a great group of kids, and they have weighed in on a number of things. I know several of them have my number and have called me or emailed me, and we're really excited, the, what the program has built, and providing these young county residents with the ability to learn about government, to weigh in on policies that affect them and their future. So we ask that you pass the bill this evening, and I'll stop talking and let the expert talk.
Thank you. Any questions? I see no lights from my colleagues. All right. At this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 77-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public? Madam Chair, yes. We received three submissions through the online testimony tool ahead of time. Those all went to the council. They're included in the summary that is posted online, and they have been added to the record. Thank you. At this time, we will invite members of the audience who signed up ahead of time to address the council on Bill Number 77-22 when your name is called. Please come up to the table, have a seat, state your name and address for the record, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have Connor Curran. Come on down. I have Connor Curran come on down.
Good evening, Chairwoman Radvian, Vice Chair Pruski, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Connor Curran, resident District Three and former chair of the Anarundel County Youth Advisory Council. Tonight, I am here to encourage the council to pass Bill seventy-seven twenty-two. Through my time advocating for thousands of students for the Chesapeake Regional Association Student Councils and Youth Advisory Council, I have a strong understanding of how county government works for the people it aims to represent. It's vital that youth have a seat at the table. County government often takes action on things that have a long-lasting impact. We want to ensure that young people have a voice when it comes to our county's future. This legislation will ensure that every administration going forward will have a youth component involved. This alone is so empowering to many young people. In the two years that this council has existed, we have hosted a variety of events, including a financial literacy academy, provided suggestions on the redesign on the mental health agency website, provided testimony on a variety of bills in county plan, and drafted the legislation that you have in front of you this evening. Young people have been at the charge of many movements that have created social change. By putting this council in the county code, we are sending a message to our residents that youth perspective matters, and we want to help them grow. It's because of this council that I understand how our budget process works, how to navigate various county services that our tax dollars pay for, and understand how our county interacts with our communities we serve. Youth are the future of our county's well-being and economy. This legislation will put youth voice in a county code and will put that in our values as a county. I urge the council to pass Bill seventy-seven twenty-two to support young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this bill, I ask that you come down to the table at this time. All right. Seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill seventy-seven dash twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty-two.
Bill number seventy-seven twenty-two, an ordinance concerning boards, commissions, and similar bodies, youth advisory council.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
I just want to, one, be added as a co-sponsor, and two, thank Mr. Curran for your testimony this evening as well as all of your service over the last two years. It's been a privilege of mine to work with the youth in our high schools in Glen Burnie and also with the youth at Old Mill High School who sought me out to improve a skate park at Sawmill Creek. And I think it's really vital that we listen to our youth. As Mr. Curran said, they are the future of this county, and they would like to see the improvements and their tax dollars used in a way that will impact their lives as our future. So I think this is a great bill. I'm excited, and thank you, Mr. Curran, for coming down tonight again.
I'm going to add my kudos to Mr. Curran. I think I still remember the first time I heard you testify on behalf of the need for a new Old Mill High School. And things finally do come to fruition some days. I think this is a fantastic bill, so thank you to the administration. We have over eighty thousand young people in our public schools and tens of thousands more who are homeschooled and attend private schools, and they make up at least 20% of our county population. So that is a huge number of people in our county that need a voice, and I like the way that this brings young people's voices to the table. So I appreciate this bill. All right. Oh, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there anything that would prevent a county executive from just continuing to keep this as an executive order?
There is nothing that would prevent. The county executive felt it was important to codify it, and we thought that with a couple of boards to get a little more half. And as you heard from Mr. Curran, and I can testify to this, that they've been a real value add to the county. So we'd like them in code.
Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, I just want to be added as a co-sponsor of Bill seventy-seven twenty-two. Thank you.
I will join the club as well. Add me as a co-sponsor, please. Oh, do you have a follow-up? Okay, Mr. Volkey, you may.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that Crask still operates to serve as a voice for students in the public schools, right? Because I just literally last week got an email from them that had a position statement on Bill seventy-four twenty-two, which was withdrawn, but they offered up a position on that. So I think that's an avenue that exists for student voices already. Am I right?
It's my understanding that Crask is not a county government board, right?
Part of the school system, I think.
Correct.
Yeah. And then there's also through the community college, is there some mechanism whereby students at the community college are able to have a voice in governance or to participate?
I'm sure there is.
Okay. I thought so. I think Mr. Curran's a part of it, as a matter of fact. I saw it in his titles. So I guess the question that I'm trying to grapple with in my mind is, if we already have all these different avenues, and if there's nothing that precludes this from being something that a county executive can continue, what is the need to have to put it in code?
I mean, the real answer is some sense of permanency.
Sure.
Right.
Because the concern that somebody else is going to get rid of it if they come into the office.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no additional lights from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill number seventy-seven twenty-two has been passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. All right. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was just thinking, if we could briefly recognize the artist, the murals for people who did not, who weren't able to be here earlier when we had our little ceremony. And for my part, I have to say, it's been just very enriching to be able to sit here and have that to look at instead of the plain brown walls that were there. It's really wonderful. So I was just hoping you might repeat something from what you said at six o'clock.
Absolutely. So we have these beautiful new pieces of art that reflect the workforce and the different types of labor in Anarundel County, reflected in the two panels on the wall. The artwork was sponsored by the Anarundel County Arts Council, and so we give a shout-out to April Nyman. And we also give a shout-out to the artist, who was chosen from many artists and then was selected to be the artist for this particular project, whose name is Sally Warren Comport. And she was here tonight and was really wonderful unveiling. Also, a shout-out to Christine Anderson, who coordinated a lot of the logistics. So thank you to them, and yeah, thank you for the reminder. I got so busy up here. I think you have a better view of it from over there than I do. And I'm dug into my paper, but I've spent a lot of time looking at it already. So thank you for taking the opportunity to do that. All right. Just one thing before we adjourn this evening. There is a work session scheduled on September thirteenth at 9:00 a.m. This will be in-person. We were able to do these virtually before because there was a justification and agreement. I just would like to discuss with my colleagues if you have a preference for having a virtual work session on the thirteenth. Any?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will not be here at nine o'clock because I will be dropping off a kid up in Brooklyn Park at 8:55.
All right. Any additional comments? Preference for virtual, in-person?
Preference for in-person.
Preference for in-person. Any other comments?
Virtual or in-person, I too will be the victim of a bus arriving on time, so we'll see what happens.
Madam Secretary, are we bound by nine o'clock as a starting time? Is that in?
Not for work sessions, whereas the rules say that the legislative sessions need to begin at 7:00 p.m. There is nothing in the rules as far as the start time for work sessions. So I would suggest, and perhaps with the assistance of our new parliamentarian here at the table, that you just have a consensus, if that's the direction that you want to head in. But Mr. Bennett can certainly add to that.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So we have previously had our work sessions start at 9:30 a.m. And we did change the time of our evening meetings when we were totally virtual during COVID. So I think we had the flexibility, at least for my part, I would say, if we start at 9:30, I know I can be here.
Would anyone have a concern if we started at 9:30, or is everyone okay with that? Mr. Pruski?
So Madam Chair, I will not be here due to a conflict, but I always can watch the session because they're optional. So thank you.
All right. Then let's go forward with our work session on September thirteenth at 9:30 a.m. Does that sound, am I getting the thumbs up from everybody? Consensus? All right. Very good. Any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, now it's a figure.
Second? Do they all want to stay? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. The county council will meet on September thirteenth, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. for our work session. See you then.